Point of order, the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, February the 20th. Roll call, please.
Just floating.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Green absent. Kirline?
Here.
Fragoso?
Here.
Gonzalez Parver absent. And Rodriguez?
Present.
Did I forget anybody? No, okay. Just clarification on that. So Chair Green, we knew was going to be gone. Do we think Gonzalez Parker is coming?
She didn't contact us to tell us she was not going to be here.
Okay, thank you. So maybe she's just a minute late. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Folks could look that over and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Can I ask a question about the agenda? I see that public hearing item number one is being continued. Can we ask staff any questions about it?
Because it's a public hearing, you can, but wait until that item happens. Right now, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
So I'll still entertain a motion for...
I move that we approve the agenda as listed.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes five to zero. The meeting protocol, the chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior. In order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings, the commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. I'd like to just recognize that Commissioner Gonzalez Parver is here. This is the time for public comments on the agenda, non-agenda items. If there's anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, you may do so now. Please state the matter on which you wish to speak. Matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by commission chair. Persons are not required to give their name or address, but it's helpful for speakers to state their name for the record and whether they are not a Fairfax resident in order for the secretary to identify them in the minutes. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? I'm seeing none. We'll go ahead and go to the consent calendar. There is no consent calendar items on the agenda this evening. And we're going to move to the public hearing items. This is public hearing item number one and it is for six, eight, 10, and 12. School Street Plaza, application 19-15. And this particular agenda item came before us at the January 16th meeting and at that meeting, the Planning Commission continued this item in order for the applicant to address a number of items that are reflected in the minutes in our packet. And maybe before we take on any decision on this, I'd just like to hear from staff if actually there's some action happening on the agenda on that packet.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I am going to recuse myself from this item until the next item for personal interest.
So we'll recognize that Commissioner Newton is recusing herself.
So, the applicants and staff are still working on gathering the information that was requested and preparing the updated plans.
So they are in action. There is action happening.
Yes, we had a meeting today. They've accomplished some of the tasks. We've done some of the tasks, but there just wasn't enough time to get everything done.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's very helpful. And so, did that help answer your question?
Actually, I have a specific question, that being, I was onsite last week, at Frog's actually, so I walked around to check it out, and I noticed that there are two major sections. One, along the ballpark, towards the rear, and another section at the end of Frog's to the left, as you're facing, in the corridor between the exterior building and the middle building. Several of those walls I see appear to be have completely removed. Is that...
They have permits for all the work they're doing out there.
They do have permits for everything.
Yeah, they're having some issues with things falling apart and they're fixing them.
That's what it seemed like to me, and I was concerned that someone was watching over that.
Yeah, the building officials have been out there like every other day, so they have permits, yes.
That's comforting, thank you.
So I'd like to entertain a motion on this public hearing item to continue...
Chair, before you do that, I have a comment.
I'd like to hold on just a second, and the reason why, I'm sorry for interrupting you, is that what we'll need to do is take an action on this agenda item, close it, and if you have questions for the director about things that are happening in the community, it should happen in the planning director's report or when the commissioner comments and requests versus on this item, which is, we can't really discuss it this evening.
I don't have a...
The director, do you agree with where I'm going with this?
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay.
My comment was on the agenda as it was and with the agenda item one is still reflecting the original application with a 14 units, not 15, and...
Yeah, and actually, it's gone down, so, thank you.
Okay, and the inclusion of 12B2, so I just wanted to make that clarification on the agenda for this item.
I think that is an important point to bring up because that would be the modification to this description when we continue the item.
Yes.
For it to be accurate.
Yes.
If not, then we're not continuing the right item. So with recognizing then Chair Swift's really amendment to this change, then can we entertain a motion to continue this then to the March 19th meeting? And we really want to press them on moving forward and coming back to us. We don't want to continue this item. I know it's not in your hands.
Well, they don't want it continued either. It's just these things take time.
Right. Thank you.
I would like to move approval of continuance of the School Street Plaza, application number 19-15, with the suggested corrections and modifications as identified by Commissioner Swift, and continue to the March 19th meeting.
I second the motion.
Thank you very much. We have a first from Commissioner Fragoso and a second from Gonzalez Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, and is there anybody voting against that? No, hearing no one. The motion passes five to zero. Now we'll move to the discussion items, and this is continued discussions on the accessory dwelling unit. And let's wait for Commissioner Newton to return to her seat. And while she's doing that, I think I just want to kind of talk a little bit about this before, because I know the planning director is going to give a presentation, but just kind of, since I don't exactly know what's on there, I want to recognize the fact that this commission took a lot of time to develop an ADU, JADU ordinance to address the state of California requirements that were being handed down to jurisdictions in order to preserve our local rights in some ways and have that ordinance effective by January 1, 2020, which we did ensure happened with the city council. And as part of those deliberations and in talking, we all had a variety of issues that we kind of whiteboarded, that we said we really want to get back to. And this is staff's now opportunity to bring it back. We have the recently adopted and effective ordinance, and he's taken what he heard during those meetings and have now brought them back. And one of the key priorities for us was that, yes, we are recognizing that with the pressure for affordable housing, that the ADUs and the JADUs are potentially going to become very prolific in the community, and we're in a high fire zone. And so we're very concerned about that, and we wanted to do some discussions. And so we had a meeting that was on January 16th where we started to, each of us started to bring up issues of concern. And so the staff has now sifted through that information and brought up some key topic areas that he's bringing back to us, and I want to thank him for coming up with the recommendations that he didn't hear for us to discuss further. And what we'll do is the staff will give us his presentation, and I'd like to go through each of the questions that he's brought up in here and deal with them separately. And we'll have an opportunity to get public feedback and for each of us to talk about the different sections. And if we have enough direction to give to staff, then he'll have an opportunity to begin working on some amendments to whatever ordinances that we end up coming up with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ben, and thank you for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was a very good summary of the work to date and some of the background. It's not only the Planning Commission, but the town council in adopting those AD, JAD regulations that express concern that this not be the end of the town's efforts in those regards, particularly with what we recognize is an overarching fire safety issue. And indeed, as noted in the staff report, the number one priority guiding additional efforts pertaining to these regulations has to do with making sure that we don't take what is already a significant fire hazard situation in our community and make it worse with these regulations. And the specific concern has to do with the state's decision to allow up to three dwelling units and convert garages. And even though it's an interesting split with the regulations where if somebody were to create from scratch a freestanding ADU and it were located more than half a mile from Sir Francis Drake and Broadway, they would have to provide a parking space for that ADU, but the state has also elected to allow conversion of existing garages for that ADU. So they've created kind of an unusual situation where you could end up with three dwelling units on a property with no onsite parking. So, given the existing topographic and other circumstances, that is a significant concern to this town. And specifically, the concerns behind this fire hazard discussion and issue have to do with unique attributes of Fairfax. And when I say unique, there are other jurisdictions, there are portions of other jurisdictions in the county which have similar issues, and indeed, they are struggling with how to address this problem. But these include the steep topography that's present in the town, many portions of the town, the fact that when you get a mile and a half of Cascade Drive or some of these other streets, deep into the Cascade area, Cascade Canyon area, that your evacuation and emergency response times are extended, and I'll have additional comment on that in a moment, that the town is extensively vegetated. I think it's safe to say with the exception of what's covered with buildings or asphalt, it's vegetated, and in many cases, it's wooded. We also have in some areas, some of the upper portions, low water pressure, and the streets themselves raise many concerns, including their narrow width, several exceptionally tight turn radiuses, things that make it challenging to get up there with a regular vehicle, and dead ends. And these dead ends, in some instances, lack a fire turnaround. I mean, certainly your standard cul-de-sac, you know, 40 or 60-foot radius bulb at the end of a street is nonexistent in Fairfax. So we don't have that, and in many instances, we lack something to allow fire apparatus to turn around adequately in these streets. We also have a challenge with on-street parking, and I will discuss that further. So one of the conversations that arose last time is, the town can't do it by itself, that when we're dealing with fire safety issues, that we would need to be closely involved with the fire professionals. And in this case, the Marin County Fire Department, who also, as recently, has taken over administration of the Ross Valley Fire Department. And staff has had, continued the conversations with Jason Weber, the fire chief. And we are interested, mutually interested, in not making the fire situation worse. Everybody recognizes we have a fire risk issue. So the determination that rose out of those conversations was that if we're going to approach it on a fire safety basis, we need to make sure that we have objective standards. And, you know, we hear this term again and again and again, but certainly when we're looking at state regulations and mandates, and the fact that the trend, as we will see on the second agenda item or the third, is that the trend at the state is to have measurable, quantifiable, objective standards. And this governs development individually and possibly will govern the town's approach towards ADU and JADU regulations. So another item that, on the topic of emergency evacuation, is, you know, reflective of the concerns that exist in the county about fire safety. The county has already applied for a study grant to look at emergency evacuation in Marin, and this is very good news. I didn't include it in the packet for this meeting, but your commission previously had the report that talked about how Fairfax is one of the most adverse communities in the state for emergency evacuation. And so that's something that it's good to see, and it will be very interesting to see how they approach the methodology and what the results end up being for Fairfax. And, you know, I can't plug Measure C except to note that those type, that type of a bond measure would, if passed, allow for that study to occur regardless of whether the bond or the grant application passes or not. So just a note about that, that if there's funding, that study's going to occur. In closing that conversation with Chief Weber, it was agreed to schedule a meeting, and staff hopes that this will be more than one meeting because we know that this is a very complex, multi-part undertaking. And so it would include fire professionals. And in an effort to get a direct conduit to the Planning Commission and not just have staff reporting back, I expressed interest and the chief agreed to have a Planning Commission representative on that group. And I would like to note that this is an ad hoc, temporary group. It wouldn't necessarily be appointed by the Planning Commission, but it would simply be a kind of a consent or a consensus item. And with her background in fire-related items, and this includes very detailed and ongoing efforts in terms of getting certified fire-wise neighborhood designation in her neighborhood, and also working on evacuation drills and working on goat grazing efforts, staff believes that Commissioner Swift is, would be an excellent choice to serve on this committee. She not only brings background, but we well know her diligence and comprehensive approach to these type of items, and staff is confident she would add a lot to that group. So the recommendation would be, if your commission has additional comments relating to the fire safety issues and factors that perhaps could be looked at as part of this ongoing effort, staff would like to solicit those at this time, and also just get a consensus of who on the commission would be appointed, or not appointed, but asked to serve on that group.
Hold on. So just, were you going to go then through the other two, or you want me to go ahead and just tackle? I like how you paused there. I think that would be really nice. Okay, so then with that, so what we're addressing with this one item is that there's going to be a temporary ad hoc group that's going to form. It's going to include at a minimum, fire staff, the planning director, I assume, and either, you know, one or more planning commissioners, whatever we discuss here. But the point is that he's looking not only for items that would be discussed with them, but also items that might relate eventually to our ordinance. And so what he's attempted to do here, and what I want us to keep thinking about as we're going through this, is that these topics that he's put here are the things that he thinks are important. So what modifications to those? What are we missing? But I want to keep us moving towards, how are we going to take these words into objective standards, mapped, and prioritized? So as you begin working with fire groups or your GIS people at the county or whoever, wanting us to think about, if steep topography is one criteria, then a map of where that is, and then we'll all have to talk about what is this area of steep topography. But also, what I want to include here is that in our minutes was all of our debate last time about topic areas that we wanted to include. And I know that there are things that are missing here, so...
Point of order.
And then the other thing is in the back here are other issues, and I don't want us to be afraid not to bring those in, because I want us to be bold and think about what we think is going to be the most important topic areas to bring to the fire department. I wanted to recognize, I guess, first that we had Commissioner Fragoso who wanted to say something first, and then I'll get right back.
But I have a point of order. I don't understand the process here. Are we opening up any part of this for public input, or are we just pausing to talk amongst ourselves and then go back to the staff report?
What I'd like to do is, I'm happy to take public input, I am going to take public input. The question is whether we want to take it before we give feedback or after, and I'm happy to start each topic area with public input if that would help inform us. Are you more comfortable with that?
I personally would prefer to have public input before we deliberate.
Okay, good. So with a pause for a minute, is there any member from the public who's interested in addressing this commission specifically on this first topic in here, which is kind of question one in the topic areas to be addressed with the fire group?
I don't know. Is there any member out there who...
Seeing no one.
Would like to say something?
Okay, so go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, point of order as well, I guess we're not going to go through this and have questions for, of staff from the commission, or...
I think that questions could come out of each of us wanting to ask and contribute. So if that's part of what you want to do, then I think you should do that. And you did have a question, though?
I do. A comment more than a question regarding a Planning Commission representative to this fire-wise group with the chief. I wholeheartedly recommend Commissioner Swift, who has been a leader in the fire-wise community and is the most qualified, I believe, of all of us to be that liaison with the group, not to mention, of course, she talks to goats, so if she's willing to do that...
They talk back, too.
And did you have any other topic areas that you wanted to raise or that you thought was missing here?
I did have, I did have one question, but I will admit, I have not completely read through the ordinance to confirm. I don't recall seeing that we waive any portion of the fees for ADUs and JADUs. I thought, I thought we did have some fee waiver, but is this an appropriate time to bring that up? Or if we don't currently have it, can we look into incorporating it? I know we need all the funds we can get, however, it is one way to encourage and support more affordable units.
At the risk of being inaccurate, I believe that our fees are one-half of what the calculated cost of processing those permits is. So we just completed, recently completed a fee study, and a decision was made by the council in adopting the new fee schedule for the town, that the fees charged would be half that roughly.
That's terrific.
There's some language on page seven of the new ordinance.
They lowered the planning fee, but they did not waive the building permit review fees. Those are just going to be...
I had further questions about that language. I actually have questions, a couple of questions about the existing new ordinance, as well as other issues.
I'm sorry, are you talking about seven of...
I don't see on page seven the fee.
Of the Exhibit A amendments?
Yeah, number two, B.
ADU process, oh, okay, yes, I was reading down below, is $500. Any building permit fee should be in addition to the ADU processing fee, and building permit fees will be reduced by 50%.
And I think with the town council recently adopting their fees, they're not going to want to entertain a change to that at this point. So do you have any...
Is this what council adopted, what is in here?
Yes, it's recent.
Okay, so they waive, they are waiving the half of the processing fee and half of the building permit fees as well.
Well, that's what it says.
Yes.
Until 2027, and then they...
I think that's terrific. Thank you.
And a question along those lines for staff. Do we also have for, like a moratorium for existing unpermitted or, that the council had, is that still in effect, their program to bring existing units? Thank you. And so is that, that's still ongoing as well? Yes?
The state regulations stipulate a five-year period for bringing violations into compliance. I believe that the town has a similar amnesty program in effect, but I'd have to double-check what our specific provisions are.
So I wanted to recognize Commissioner Newton, who wanted to address this item.
Yeah, I mean, that was my question about this particular language. We have an incentive program, but I guess I was a little confused about, you know, if a lot of the existing units that may not be legal can be legalized under the new ordinance, you know, those ones, I guess, wouldn't need an amnesty? And then, so what's out there in terms of what might still require an amnesty? I mean, short-term units, is that something that might allow, you know, is there an amnesty for that or not an amnesty? Is there a distinction? I guess I'm just really kind of, there's, you can get down into some of the weeds here with how this works in terms of what you're bringing in that's legal. If your ADU would otherwise conform to this ordinance... I guess, wouldn't need an amnesty? And then, so what's out there in terms of what might still require an amnesty? I mean, short-term units, is that something that might allow, you know, is there an amnesty for that or not an amnesty? Is there a distinction? I guess I'm just really kind of, there's, you can get down into some of the weeds here with how this works in terms of what you're bringing in that's legal. If your ADU would otherwise conform to this ordinance, but exceed the maximum size, for example, you know, I'm just wondering whether or not you can bring the non-conforming. We want to make sure when we're looking at what the scope of the current amnesty program might be, whether or not it's worth extending that or limiting it.
Well, I could, we will report back on the scope of the amnesty program. In terms of short-term rentals, it's specifically noted in the new regulations that short-term rentals are not allowed for an ADU. And I think that the concern there is that if you build these structures and then, you know, rent them out to weekend guests, you're actually taking away from housing stock. So, the ADU, JADU regulations specifically prohibit that. And one of my topical areas in the JADU, which I'll get to as part of the back and forth here, deals with short-term rentals.
And so, kind of on top, on page two at the top, and the factors that would be primary for us to address in terms of intensification of ADUs in certain areas and a concern around that, do we think that the planning director has captured in essence those, or what is he missing at the top there? That's, that's the question.
At the top of page two.
Correct, of his staff report.
May I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I believe one item that was brought up in the public hearing last time in relation to fire was if it was possible to, for setbacks, if setbacks could be expanded in high, high fire areas. So, I don't think that was listed, and that was, that was an area of concern that I had as well.
I can respond to that. What we did with the setbacks in our regulations was exactly what this, well, what the state allowed, specifically the four-foot setback is stipulated by the state. I mean, that is codified in the statute. That is state law. So, there is no flexibility in those areas where the setback is set forth to be four feet. We did on the rear, and you could probably help me, put in setbacks where we could. So, that we've basically explored that topic, and what you see is kind of either what the state has directed or what the town has already included for its...
And I think on that topic area, I want to continue to press on her direction. I'd like setbacks to be included in the list. I'd like, as part of the meeting with the fire department, to have that conversation that in high fire hazard zones and given the nature of fires and hillsides, how does four feet relate? Because if we're going to go out on a limb, maybe that's the limb we want to go out on. So, we want more information and feedback from the fire department on that, and we realize we're going to make the attorney nervous, and that's fine. The council can decide later that they don't want that. Was there other topic areas that you thought were missing?
Just, just in relation to fire, that was it. And I also wanted to comment that I think that Commissioner Swift would be an excellent choice for the ad hoc committee.
Thank you very much. How about Gonzalez-Farber?
Yes, I have a question. I'm looking at page six of the amendment, of the amendments, and I'm looking at...
So, this is the ordinance?
Yes. Actually, where did it go? No. I'm sorry. I'm looking at page nine. Yes. And I have a question about the maximum size. I know that the state is 1,200 square feet. We're showing 800 square feet, but under one, I guess, F1A, it says 850. It also talks about, further down, it talks about 100, or 1,000 for, 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom ADU. So, I'm trying to figure that out. How are we able to get around the 1,200?
Square?
Yes, I believe that the current, one of the things we have to recognize is that this, these are moving targets. I almost expect there to be more changes this upcoming legislative session. So, I believe the former maximum was 1,200 square feet, and it's now been reduced to 1,100 square feet because, or 1,000, excuse me, 1,000 square feet, with 850 the size that you have to allow regardless. Now, in terms of maximums, it should be noted that conversion of an existing accessory structure could theoretically be any size. So, this is one of those circumstances where if you have a five-car garage and you want to turn that into an ADU, you could do so.
No, I disagree. No, that's not a right statement.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, or?
Yeah, I, but curious about the 800 versus the 850?
Yeah, my question is also about this, Ben, because the first one A is, says the maximum size is 850 for a studio or one-bedroom and 1,000 for a two-bedroom. And then, in the last one, I mean, skip over the 50%, because I've got another question about that. But the last one says, none of these other things, you know, two, three, four, whatever on down the row, can, can require you to go below 800 square feet. So, I think, Esther, does that answer your question? 850 is a maximum for the one-bedroom or the studio, but your far requirements and your lot coverage requirements can't force them to go less than 800.
Yes, and so, that was very confusing.
But my question is, and B, it says that an attached ADU is created on a lot with an existing primary dwelling is further limited to 50% of the floor area. And C says none of these other things can limit you to less than 800 square feet. I'm assuming that B can also not limit you to less than 800 square feet. Is that correct? Because it doesn't say that. It just says, you know, F2, F3, F4, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't say F1B.
So, I think that you all are bringing up topic areas that I think that staff could address as part of the reorganization and coming back to us. But today, what we're trying to do is on the top of page two, looking at these topic areas. And so, are you saying that somehow the allowed size, size should be discussed, or are you just pointing out that when this ordinance comes back to us, that you want some clarifying language there?
Yeah, I was just trying to get clarification for myself because some of, like, C supersedes A and B. And so, I was just trying to get clarification on what the rule really was.
Okay, so going back to, so Commissioner Gonzalez-Farber, on the top of page two, is there any topic areas that you felt that the director was missing? We now have heard that the addition of setbacks might be one, one thing.
I have a confusion.
I'm sorry. I was asking Gonzalez-Farber for her input.
So, as far as fire, yes, the setback, I agree, especially because if we are going to address parking, it would be, I guess, best to have like a 20-foot setback so you can actually park, even if you're parking within the setback, but at least 20 feet from the property line. So, that gives you, you know, parking going in. So, that would be my recommendation. Something else, I guess, that's kind of conflicting about, about structures less than 30 feet from the property line or an adjacent building is the rescue window component for fire. So, the rule about 30 feet says that the window has to be six feet above the finished floor, but for a rescue window, you can't be more than, what is it, 42 inches?
And so, I think she's beginning on the second item we're going to talk about, which is the next part regarding objective development standards. So, now it sounds like you have nothing...
But she's talking about a fire-related concern.
Objective development standards that we're about to get to, but...
No, it's a, it's directly related to fire in terms of what's...
Isn't that discussed at the top of page three under the developments, objective development?
It also is, but if we're talking about ways to address fire life safety issues in terms of the ADU, this is one. It's kind of an overlapping item.
Like fire accessibility, fire egress.
That's good. Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
The other thing, and this is just, you know, something that comes up over and over again on some of my projects, is that the public right-of-way is usually a lot wider than the actual road. And so, in, you know, discussing parking and identify, you know, identifying or even marking where somebody can park, I don't, you know, I don't know that we can require street parking, but I recall a project that came before us where we were working with the fire department to find a space for displaced parking for a tenant. And so, it was very, you know, case by case, I guess. But I'm wondering if, you know, anytime there is one of these applications, you know, is there a way for fire to work with the applicant to identify, you know, parking in the public right-of-way that is not necessarily paved yet? So, it's kind of confusing, but I would say, I think that was like one of the, it was, it was noted on here, and I guess the response was we don't think that's going to work because there would be a public outcry as to, you know, putting chevrons, demarcating parking spaces. So, this is kind of, it's a gray area, but the public right-of-way goes beyond the paved roadway most of the time.
Okay, that's good, good feedback. Thank you. How about Commissioner Swift?
Just related to this, I don't have anything to add. I have questions that we brought up at the last meeting about some of the items, other items we had concerns about. So, I'll wait on that.
How about Commissioner Newton?
Okay, so my first question is whether this topic is properly limited to fire or ought to be more broadly cover emergency situations. Because I think floods, earthquakes, electrical outages, landslides, just emergency vehicular and emergency team access that we just talked about in general, I think is something that the fire department and other rescue services are probably best suited to help us understand what they, are there architectural standards, like the window issue that Commissioner Gonzalez-Farber was referencing that might be objective, that they might help us develop? Are there, you know, we talked about geologic, topographic, I mean, this is all tied into hillsides, narrow roads, not enough traffic. But to the extent there are other geologic, you know, areas, I think we've got to look at these landslides historically. You know, during floods, where are the places that are going to be really impacted? You know, the ADU that's built far enough away from the creek in the summer may be right in the middle of the creek in the winter. And I, and that was one of the things in the existing ordinance, you know, I'm sorry I keep going back to it, but it talks about a certain distance from the creek. And I was like, per what map? You know, because there's our whole question again, right? Is it the creek that was there before the Corps moved it? Is it the creek that there during a summer area? Is it that, you know, stuff that comes down behind that guy's garage every winter, you know? I don't know. I think, you know, that one, I think we've specifically got Fairfax and San Anselmo Creeks identified right now. But again, those creeks don't tend to necessarily be in the same place every point of the year, right? So...
Okay, the additional geological or other natural factors, that's certainly an area that we could add to the consideration. As you know, we do have the stream buffer listed under E8, where it talks about to Fairfax and San Anselmo Creeks 20 feet. So, that's our typical requirement for construction. We also evaluate whether it's in a floodplain or not. So, we would be looking at that as a matter of course, if it were proposed.
Okay, yeah, floodplain, floodway. I think in terms of slides, we're going to be concerned about lack of vegetation in addition to all the issues with extensive vegetation. I'm also concerned about poor water pressure, and, you know, obviously, that's a fire issue.
And that was listed as one of those items?
I imagine the trees would come under landscaping, so we can talk about that next. You know, to the extent that materials make a difference in building and fire resistance and other architectural standards help with flood resistance, such as raising units above a certain elevation, you know, these are all some things that we might be able to bring down into more of a objective level. Over.
Thank you very much. I love what everybody's talking about, and the, besides what I've heard, I support everything I've heard. I wrote all of those things down. There was a couple of other things I wrote down. One was under the evacuation, more about evacuation routes or like an evacuation study of some sort. Is that underway, or would that be an action that we could do? Also, under the street issues, it says including narrow width. I was saying an identification from them about if we went one way, where would that happen, or any input on roads that they can provide us. So, those were the two additional topic areas that I had, and really a clarification on mapping, because I've heard several people input here about different maps. So, it would be good to say that's the map we're going to use, or how these maps are going to be used as we're going forward. So, Cindy, before we get off this item, you have the time and interest in working on this ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. Just out of interest, is there anybody else interested, or, okay, I don't see anybody with that. Okay, so we'll go on to the next item then, and we'll come back when we have to make a decision, maybe in, in the end.
Thank you. I believe as an outgrowth of the discussion concerning ADU, JADUs and fire safety, the town council at their February meeting directed staff to consider short-term residential rentals. And to clarify, in our current status, we have what's called a permissive ordinance. In other words, if the ordinance doesn't permit something, or it is not determined that what is proposed is substantially similar to something that is a permitted use, for example, in the ordinance, then you can't do it. So, if it's not permitted, you can't do it. And the town has not taken action to prohibit short-term rentals, but it's functionally different enough from anything that we do allow. For example, in certain zones, we allow hotels and things like that, that it's considered to be not permitted. But I think the concern or the question is, is that even with the listing of short-term rentals as not being permitted with ADUs and JADU construction and use, that we should look more seriously at that. And staff supports evaluating this because just... And staff supports evaluating this, because just anecdotally, it seems as though those type of rentals are the ones that could end up with a lot of vehicles parked in very haphazard manners that raise concerns, not only for fire safety, but for other people who are living there. So even if this conversation doesn't result in a recommendation for a ban or something of that nature, I think a relationship, a study that evaluates parking and the type of rentals, the circumstances under which those concern, those take place, would be useful. So that's mainly an informational item, just to say that it's likely we will be presenting something to your commission at your next meeting in March.
And so then, just clarifying then, on page seven of the adopted ordinance, we have the rental term of less than 30 days, and so what you're thinking about is somehow trying to pull the information from fire and to help inform that, as well as doing your own research and trying to have these run at similar times? Or you're going to try to decide as you start to get into it? Or how does that relate to this topic that you've got?
I think they will be running on more or less parallel tracks. It's hard to say. The last time this was raised, and this was before my tenure, there were conversations that took place, both at the planning commission and at the town council. So we would likely touch base with whatever deliberations and direction was given at that time, and then proceed forward. Now, with the recognition, again, you know, it's nothing like smelling, you know, smoke from a wildland fire that's just a few miles away for two straight weeks to really bring home the fact that we need to be very, very aware of things that adversely impact emergency evacuation or emergency access. And so this is one of those items that could tie into that.
And so, just wondering if there's anybody from the public who wants to give any input to us or staff before we embark on the short-term rental idea? Is there anybody who wants to talk? Not seeing anybody. How about any planning commissioners who may want to give any input to staff before they start on this topic?
What are we giving them input on?
Anything that's in your brain right now that you feel like, before he embarks on this work, that you did not hear from his mouth now, that you think is important? It's not mandatory to say anything, because he's going to come back to us?
So for the, covering the entire ADU?
What we're hearing about right now is on page two, the topic of short-term rentals. He said, he just gave us an overview of what he's going to do and the timeframe he's going to give it at. And I'm just wondering if you, if.
I do. Okay, so at the last meeting, as recorded in our very helpful minutes, Mr. Egger gave us some information about short-term rentals and the transit occupancy tax, and talked about about 300 to 400 second units out there. I would recommend investigating the extent to which we are getting transit occupancy tax, or whoever gets those taxes is getting them, from units here in this town. Because theoretically, there are people who are not paying the tax that they should be paying, and there should be some arm of a body that performs enforcement to collect taxes that should be paid when they're not, right?
I can assure you that that will be a topic of discussion in the March meeting.
Good input, thank you for that.
So we do currently have TOT tax?
We don't collect it for Airbnb and those type of rentals, though, because there's no.
Only for hotels.
There's no enforcement, you know, detecting those type of things.
Well, to clarify, though, they're not permitted, so that's why you're not collecting TOT, other than on our hotels, right?
Right, that's one of those regulatory loophole things.
And it's not good, right? Because the hotel is paying the tax and losing the business to the illegal operators of the short-term rentals. So what I'm suggesting is a little law enforcement may be in order.
Thank you. As I said, that has already been discussed among staff, and we will be presenting options to your commission for consideration.
Okay, Ben, so then, let's go on then to the objective development standards. Good suggestion, thank you.
Okay, yes, objective development, you know, when you see our staff report that the county has expanded that term to design and development standards, is sort of the term de jour. But in any event, we were really scrambling to put in standards in our ADU, JADU regulations. And one of the topics that staff noted the commission was interested in is more investigation of vegetative management. And an example might be, in terms of with fire, is could we look at a vegetative management plan accompanying proposed new ADU, JADUs? And, you know, what's the trigger and things like that? And that's, that's an example of something that we could, with the fire group discussions, get into that. Pertaining to windowsill height, and I'd just like to clarify this, that staff recognized that, yes, if you have a bedroom and it's on the second floor, or actually, any bedroom, excuse me, it needs an emergency egress window, and those have to be a certain minimum dimension and a maximum height above the floor. The intention here has to do with whether the window faces a side or rear property line. And so the idea is to encourage people, and that's where the 30-foot requirement is. So the idea is to encourage people that if they have windows that are facing those, and especially the side, where we have these minimum setbacks, right, four feet, that those need to be a minimum of six feet above the finished floor, the bottom sill. And the idea there is, is to have those windows provide a modicum of privacy for these people who this second, second-story, second unit or ADU will be looking into. It's a design challenge. If you do have a bedroom that's going to be on that side property line, to figure out how to get that egress window, so it's not facing the side or rear property line, but is located maybe facing the interior of the property, or is greater than the setback distance. So that was the intention. I'd love to hear from our design professionals, or whether they believe that could be achieved. But the idea is, given the significantly reduced ability of the town to evaluate these units to preserve privacy among existing residents when there are windows proposed that are in these setback areas.
So I think, so I think what staff has done is put down some language from what he thought he heard previously, so.
Excuse me, let me just clarify, that's in the code.
No, above here, the vegetative management and the.
Correct.
Right, the window hill, hillside, and if there was any other objective development standards or meat that you could put on those bones, I think that's what he's trying to get here. And we heard some other good ones as part of, when we were meeting with the fire department, tried to get some language on some of the building stuff, as well as parking. So there's some others that we might be able to add to this later, but how about either of you?
I've come across this on some projects, and we've dealt with the lower sill with translucent glass for privacy. So, you know, in the event that you do have a bedroom, and the only way to get out is through the side, then you can put translucent glass. I think so far, that's the only thing that's come up. I don't know if, under the objective development standards, you can also include that the front door not be facing the property lines? So I've come across that as well, where the main entrance to the unit cannot be facing a neighbor. So I don't know if that falls under that category. Sometimes it's not achievable, but that also can help with privacy, especially if you're going in through the side yard. So that's, I think. And I'm not sure if building height limits would go under here? Is this? And again, this kind of goes back to the 800 square foot versus 1,000 square feet. But objective development standards, I was just looking at the building height maximum being 16 feet, and I'm thinking about an 800-square-foot structure, and that just seems really tall in proportion. So I don't know if that falls under this category.
Okay, off the top of my head, I believe that's a minimum dictated by the state, but I will check and report back to you. But I'm pretty sure that 16 was dictated.
16, okay, we can't make it 14?
Okay. I think that's it for me.
No, I was going to say the same thing that Esther did about the, maybe using obscure glass or something. I think that this section could be kind of just tweaked a little bit. I see the intent of staff, and I think the intent is good, but I think that we can rework it so that we can also meet like fire and life, life safety standards as well. Because I think that's really, probably, really, it may not be easy to, to get a design where the window isn't on the side property line, so.
So can I ask?
I think that we should, you know, be able to expand the language.
Can I ask a question then, for my clarification? So if I've got a second story, does one of the windows have to be lower for egress in a fire?
Any room that can be used, considered a sleeping room, like, so if you have a studio, there has to be at least one window that meets the egress standards, and it's a certain size, and the maximum sill has to be 44 inches off the floor.
So if the, a bedroom in one of these on a second floor only has one window, I mean, can you, then that's going to have to be the egress window?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And Ben, I think to humor us, starting to move, put that building height, like a placeholder at 14 feet, just as a placeholder to remind us that we put the topic there, and that you're researching it, that you've heard them. Commissioner Friggo, so do you have any input on this?
I have a question, because I hear you saying the bedroom egress has to be a maximum of 42 inches or six feet. But this is a lower, a minimum of at least six feet above finished floor.
Right.
It's supposed to be higher than six feet above.
Yeah, see, I think staff's intention was that that would force people to put the bedrooms towards the center of the lot, not four feet from the property line, that you would have to work their floor plan to keep the windows away from the neighbor, looking over into the neighbor's yard.
Your egress has to be higher than six feet above the floor.
No, this isn't an egress window. It's understood that if it's six feet off the floor, it's not an egress window.
These are not complimentary requirements, Norma, that's the concern. I think if we're going to put this requirement that the sill be at least six feet off the floor, there's going to be an exception for the scenarios where it's the only bedroom window, or you have three sides and they're all right next to the setback, and one of them is going to have to have the proper sill height to be the fire egress window.
So I wanted to go to back then, to Commissioner Friggo, so whether you had any input on the objective development standards?
My question on the standards is whether.
So no input.
Thank you. My question on the standards is whether we are now just discussing the ones on page two, or does it include the potential exceptions to uncovered parking?
Not yet, we haven't gotten there.
Parking will be a separate item.
We're still on the objective development standards, and so Commissioner Newton?
I'm sorry, I forgot to add another point. Question, currently, I believe when there's an application for, for building or planning, the plans are routed to the fire department, so would it be the same when, for one of these ADU, JDU? If it's a ministerial permit, would it still have to go through fire review? Okay, so they almost always require the vegetation management plan as part of their, the items that are on their list?
If it's a, if it's a new structure, it's required. If it's over a 50% remodel, it's required. It's not necessarily required if it's, for example, a less than 50% addition, but that's my understanding.
So it might be good to clarify that in your ad hoc meetings, find out what the standards are, and then we can decide whether you guys want to bring it into the ordinance for those that are less than the 50% or something like that? So that's good input to come back, come back on. Okay, so how about Commissioner Swift? Do you have some input?
I had a question. When we talk about endangered, endangered species and environmental concerns, is there a way to address those with an objective standard? And I'm not sure. I mean, how do we address, and we may talk about this a little bit later, but how do you address issues where you may have an endangered plant on a lot? With standards or some, some process?
It's a challenge, because unless we know that the plant is already there, it's hard to ascertain that, short of requiring somebody to do, a botanist to study that. So, and I think, you know, when it comes to reasonableness, is it reasonable to say, again, as an objective standard, you shall do a rare plant survey, or a rare species inventory? So that could look at both birds and plants, you know, or wildlife and plant, flora and fauna, with every application. Beyond that, you know, how would we be able to determine that? We probably could get a, the reason staff was talking a little bit about spotted owls is that known nesting and roosting sites, even though closely guarded information, that information is out there. So we could see to what extent we could incorporate that and say, you know, hey, you're, you're in this zone, and therefore, our objective standard is you will do an owl study and incorporate construction, you know, the following construction standards. And those are fairly standardized. So that might be possible, we're exploring that, but, you know, good luck trying.
Well, there are also state lists of locations where endangered plants have been identified. That's why the Fairfax Open Space Committee's identification of the Napa Falls indigo on the Ben Ross property and other properties within the town is listed on a website that the California Native Plant Society or somebody maintains, and specifically indicates where endangered species have been identified. I don't know if it gets down to a parcel type of thing, but that is certainly another area to explore.
And I, and I do think that we do have standards, like for heritage trees, you cannot cut certain things. Flood zones, we say the finished floor in 100-year floods have to be at X spot. With creeks, we say you have to be X distance from high water line, or whatever we say. So maybe that's the next step, is at a future meeting to come back with the California native plant list, so that we can see whether there's an accompanying map, to see if there's any standards that we can create. Are we dealing with detail that we can create a standard for? So maybe that's something we can come back with.
Yeah, and, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Swift, you were, I was curious about the heritage trees. Was, did I miss that in our ordinance? I know it was an area that we had talked about, but I don't think it's included here, and I thought this might be the appropriate place to raise the tree question, because of the reference to the vegetative management plan. So we talked, I think, about heritage trees, and I want to throw into that idea, not only idea not only age, but size and then endangerment status, for example, or native status or something like that. Because like, you know, with madrones, they're very sensitive to disruption near their root systems. And I think we could potentially have objective standards about development within a specific distance from a drone due to this particular sensitivity that these trees have and the fact that they're native and they're so beautiful that we should be potentially seeing if we can find a way to protect those.
So I guess the way I was thinking is that it would be redundant to bring an existing ordinance into this ordinance because are you looking at multiple ordinances when you're looking at this? Or no, we, it would all have to be embedded in here in order for it to be applicable? Is that, so we, when we get down to reorganization, we have to do a reference over to that ordinance then, not bring the whole ordinance in? This is a planning director question.
We can look at the extent to which we expand the protections more than we have. Keep in mind that under F9 landscape requirements, there should be, this is in our recent currently adopted ordinance, there shall be a two-for-one replacement planning with 36-inch box-sized native trees for removal of protected trees. And protected trees are most native trees above a certain size as listed in our tree regulations. So we, this, and this is consistent with our current regulations where we do have, we stipulate replacement for removal of trees, understanding that absent the JADU, ADU mandates and prescriptions and non-discretionary nature, that the town has much more flexibility when we're reviewing discretionary applications to guide designs that avoid removing trees, minimize impact to those trees where they're not removed, get suitable replacements. So when we lose all the nuance, we can at least say, look, if you're going to come in and take out trees, then you're going to have to replace them two-for-one. That's what our current regulations have.
So you're saying that when an ADU comes in or a JADU, you're not, your building department's not looking for flood zone, we're not looking at the tree ordinance, we're not doing those?
Well, no, we're, as of now, we absolutely do look at floods and, you know, staff-
But not tree?
One of the, no, that we would be evaluating that. We're going to go out to the site. And so if an ADU detached ADU is proposed where there's a redwood tree, you know, the replacement is two 36-inch boxes. That's the extent to which our review is directed. If they insist on putting that ADU where there's an existing protected tree and, you know, redwood, oak tree, et cetera, we would say you have to do the replacement plantings.
Can I have a question? I'd just like to hear from Linda. Linda, so when an ADU comes in, are you looking at the tree ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and we try to encourage people to do the right thing because they usually come and talk to us first, you know, and they'll ask us questions. So I mean, if someone came in and said, oh, I have this wide open yard and I want to put my ADU over here where this redwood tree is, right? We would try to say, hey, you know, reason with them. But based on the state law, we can't say no. We can just say require them to replace two heritage trees.
Can I ask a question? I mean, if you're building, if you have a, you know, virgin green lot and you're building a 1,000 square foot structure and it's right next to a redwood tree, wouldn't you require an arborist tree protection plan for, you know, regardless of whether it's an ADU or not?
For a new single-family home, we would, but not for an ADU.
All the ADUs are on properties that have previously been developed. So if you come in and there's just a ministerial permitting process for your detached ADU and the only thing that's preventing you from cutting down that beautiful coastal live oak that survived the sudden oak death syndrome that you've been caring for the drunk and spreading peanut butter and toothpaste on its roots every night. I mean, I'm just saying, that's inappropriate. I would encourage us to include our town arborist in these discussions to the extent that he has ideas for keeping development that we can say X feet of a madrone. You know, I don't know. Let's think about it. Maybe even see if he can join the commission to sit down with the fire people. He's been so involved with all the fire preparation work we've been doing too. I think his input would be invaluable.
Yeah, the concern is that it has to be an objective development standard. So if somebody doesn't know the answer going in, you're not going to be able to adopt it.
But age, size, type of tree, these are objective questions.
Okay, we can explore that. But I'm simply saying that if I'm somebody who's applying for an ADU, I would simply say, where can I put it? And, you know, they can show us where the trees are and everything else, but, you know, and we'll have to explore the, you know, the arborist report and the this and the that. I think there's going to be a pretty quick cutoff in terms of the type of requirements we can impose on somebody who's proposing an ADU because that's the clear intent of the state. And keep in mind that any modifications we make are going to get routed to HCD.
Well, let's also ask if Ray can, if he could be on that commission because if there are types of trees that are more dangerous and types of trees, he may also be able to help with the input on the building materials that may be fire retardant or fire resistant. But if there are trees that are particularly beneficial to the ecosystem in terms of the fires and the floods and the landslides, all of that information, I think, would be beneficial for us to figure out.
Here's, if I could- One at a time. And I'd like to give Commissioner Swift a chance to talk.
Well, I think as far as building materials, I think anything that is built for an ADU has to meet the current building code and fire code as far as materials and things. So I think that's covered. As far as trees, I mean, when we did the first look at this, you know, we put in that two-for-one because, you know, that was in that amount of time we had that one evening. That was the thing we could come up with. So we, you know, we made the comment, we'll put that in now. But, you know, that was something we wanted to revisit. I think we can, and I know, you know, kind of there's that line between doing something that, and I don't know how kind of we come up with that, doing something that totally precludes somebody from being able to fit in an ADU in the minimum configuration, right? Versus having something where we've got our tree ordinance and we look at that and we say, you know, is there a way for some of these trees to say, you know, that it has to be X amount of feet from a certain tree? I think that's worth looking at as a part of this.
I think the suggestion to get our town arborist involved in those conversations and determine, you know, he's the expert, if there are certain objective standards, we could interject. Your commission's comments, you know, raised this topic of somebody may not necessarily be removing the tree. They may be putting something in that's right next to a tree and it would involve the removal of a high percentage of the root zone or change the grade or things like that, steps that we know would really adversely affect the tree, especially in the long run. So I think that suggestion's a very good one and we'll loop in with our town arborist and come back with some discussion on that topic.
Commissioner Swift, did you have any more input on the objective development standards? No. Then Commissioner Gonzalez-Farber, you had more?
Yes, I was just going to say that the tree protection plan is actually a safety issue. It's not just for the protection of the tree, but it's for the surrounding inhabitants. I had an experience where the plumber cut the roots of a three-foot diameter Monterey pine and now the tree is unstable. And just because there was no protection plan, it wasn't anticipated. And so it's, now it's a safety issue. When is that tree going to become so unstable? So I think you can sell it that way.
Good connection. Okay, Ben, we're going to move now to uncovered parking, please.
Yes, uncovered parking. Excuse me. So the question regarding uncovered parking has to do with the state taking action to basically say that you can convert any garage to an ADU, period. And again, you know, the idea is there's the structure. Maybe it's simpler to do that conversion. Certainly some people have done it and we've processed ADUs in the past where it's a garage conversion. The concern is that when you take away the garage, you are definitely taking away the onsite park. You know, you could talk about other types of ADUs that may go on a site, but when you're saying that garage is going out and the state has doubled down on that by saying, and if you do that, you don't have to replace that parking. So this is kind of where the state's ADU regulations are a little bit in conflict internally because they allow the town to greater, for ADUs located greater than a half a mile from a transit line, require a parking space for that ADU. But if you convert a garage, so you get rid of the parking that's there for the house, you don't have to provide a parking, you don't have to replace that parking. So it's challenging to try to address that issue. Again, especially, and we don't know to what extent we're going to get ADUs and JADUs and the primary structure on a particular parcel. We have had one conversation with an applicant on a street that would be used as an evacuation route, which kind of raised our eyebrows about the thought of eliminating parking and having three units and, you know, putting those additional vehicles on the street.
Make that two.
Okay, just two. But, so the question is, is there a way to, A, not end up in a situation where you lose all your onsite parking? One option is to eliminate the requirement in our current code and, you know, this is 1705 to 01 OD, at least one of the off-street parking spaces for a residential unit must be covered. So this is kind of a long-term deep dive into our residential development standards. But the idea would be to say, recognizing that somebody could come in today and say, oh, here's my house with the garage, get their final, the next day come in and say, and here's my plans for converting that garage. And there isn't a darn thing we could do about that except processes a ministerial application. So, and I'm not saying people would do that. I think most, especially new houses, they kind of like to have their parking onsite. But one way to address that with the regulations that are in existence at this time would be to simply eliminate the covered parking requirement, A, and B, to actually stipulate that the required onsite parking of up to three spaces would have to be uncovered. And, you know, until the next batch of state regulations, it would mean that those could not be converted to ADUs. They couldn't, for example, propose a detached ADU on the location with the current regulations in effect today. They couldn't propose it on top of uncovered parking without replacing that parking. So that's something that staff heard some conversation at the commission level and wanted to get your commission's feedback on that option.
And so maybe before we start discussing that item, I wanted to ask if there's any public feedback on this topic before we discuss it. Seeing no one. Commissioner Frigoso?
Comment on this. I completely agree with that problem of turning garages into ADUs. The ADU is, turning the garage into an ADU is not the problem. The problem is putting those cars out on the street. And I think it's one thing if you're on a 5,000 square foot lot and you're building a big house and you've got your parking and your, you know, your driveway and, I mean, at that level of development, most people would want the garage and they're not parking their cars on the street because they drive expensive cars and they want them on their property. The problem is, and where you may be able to make the nexus is, like in my neighborhood in Deer Park where there's so little parking, there's not that many garages. And so I think it's easier to make that fire nexus in specific neighborhoods that have evacuation issues or lack of street parking. On Mirna Avenue, I know people fight over the, there's one extra parking space there that doesn't, that's not right in front of a property that, you know, it doesn't even belong to that property. But, and then there's only parking on one side of the street. So people are jostling over that one parking space right at the end of Ivy to see if you have to move your car for some reason. So that might be a good nexus. And I like the idea of moving forward because of that, removing the covered parking requirement. And also, it could give us the opportunity to allow parking and setbacks. And again, another reason not to reduce the setbacks, particularly in those really tight neighborhoods, to give them more space to be able to put in an ADU and still accommodate parking, which we have facilitated in several instances recently.
Thank you. Anybody else on the side? How about anybody over here? Cindy?
So in our current ADU regulation, we do require parking. Generally, one off-street parking space is required for each ADU. The parking space may be provided in setback areas or as tandem parking. So we have some requirements already in the ADU. Where we can't require it is when somebody converts a carport or a garage in conjunction with an ADU. That gets, to me, that gets into the whole issue, part of the issue of the fire safety and dealing with that. I don't see us looking at this point in time with the whole other issue of changing our parking requirements for the entire community, whether they're going to put an ADU or not, based on the issues we have with converting garages and carports to ADUs and not being able to require that owner to provide onsite parking. I think it's two different issues and I don't, I don't want to go down that path with parking for this reason. So, you know, when we talk about a lot of the things, when we had our off-site, right, we had all those things we addressed that we wanted to deal with. You know, I think parking may have been one of those, but there was a long list of those things. I just don't see us moving forward with that as a separate issue for the whole community and tying that back to ADUs. I don't think it gives us anything with the ADUs at this point in time. And I'd rather look at that separately when we look at those other items that we wanted to address.
I think you jumped ahead.
Are you talking about the parking permit program and the designated parking area?
Yeah, so we're still on uncovered parking and you've jumped ahead.
But I do think that they're all linked together and I, and it was probably my fault that I didn't ask Ben to cover all of it at one time. So.
But weren't we talking about the whole issue of uncovered parking and his suggestion that we move ahead with the town-wide issue? So we are in that topic. And so that's my input.
Thank you. How about you, Commissioner?
Yeah, as per usual, I do have some thoughts. My first question was about the history of requiring one covered and one uncovered. My first question was about the history of requiring one covered and one uncovered. Do you guys know why? What's the benefit of requiring the covered parking spot in the first place? Was that because visually it's better to have a garage than have a lot of cars parked around a piece of property? Do you know?
I'll tell you what I've heard, but we might want to ask Frank. You know, a lot of developers always wanted to put money into the house and didn't want to provide covered parking. And for some people, in the olden days, the car was a big investment for a tenant. And so they required people building homes to provide a covered space for the car, right? Because developers always wanted to come in and just put up the housing and didn't want to provide covered parking. That's why they required one space. That's what I was told. I wasn't here when it happened. Right? It was an amenity for tenants and for people that might rent the house or buy the house after the developer made their money off of the house, right?
Because it's more cost-effective to not build a garage than park your car in the street.
And also, our lots are narrow. So did you have any more on the parking? Yeah.
Yeah. It also occurs to me that you could even subdivide this issue into two things. And number one is to eliminate the requirement for covered parking. And then the second would be to require that it be uncovered, that the, that the number of parking spaces that are required be uncovered. Your commissioner will recall, I believe her name was Stacy, well, a recent applicant who wanted to do parking and could easily do it were it uncovered and had difficulty with creating a parking structure. And at that time, your commission was considering the possibility of amending the zoning code to allow for that possibility without getting a variance. And boy, I'm now, I'm really stretching, but there may be a general plan policy that directs exploring the possibility of uncovered parking. Don't hold me to it, I could research it more, if your commission doesn't think that this is a bad idea and we should just drop it.
The other question I have is, under the current ordinance, it seems like you can require parking unless the ADU is within a certain distance from the transportation?
You, we can require it if it's in a new detached structure. If it's conversion of existing living space, we can't require parking. Even if it's more than a, am I correct? Even if it's more than a half a mile. It's only for new structures or new units being attached to the houses. If you're converting existing living space, they don't let us require parking.
ADU. The ADU doesn't require it. The, I think the question would be, and maybe if I'm catching this correctly, is they could take and convert, let's just say, a two-car garage into an ADU and they don't have to replace those parking spaces. But would there be, if the ADU were more than a half a mile from Broadway slash to Francis Drake, would they have to require to have the one parking space?
Yes.
So.
Okay. And then my follow-up question to that is, have you guys figured out the difference between the properties that are farther away and the ones that are within that zone that don't need the parking space?
It was really easy with the old ADU ordinance because it was as the crow flies. So we could just do a half-mile circle around the bus stops. Now it's walking distance. So each individual ADU, we have to take Marin map and we have to go from the nearest bus stop and we have to use the past, the cut-throughs that we know because, right? We have to do the shortest distance that we know on foot. And if that's a half, if that's less than a half a mile, we can't require.
The ones that are green and not red on the town trail map, is that what you mean?
I'm not sure about the colors, but, you know, like squirrel hills.
Because the red ones may be there, but you can't walk them.
Right. Right. Yes, it's the ones that you can walk on.
But, I mean, oh, that brings up a good question because does that even address or the assumption is that somebody's gonna take a trail down to the bus stop or?
It specifically states walking distance. So if I can walk it.
Right. And so what my thought for that is, is maybe you need a map. Oh, I love maps. And maybe that map has the specific zones that are objectively drawn so that somebody can objectively look at the map and say, oh, I'm within X from that bus stop, I need my extra parking space.
Great suggestion. We'll add it to our GIS work program. But that's something that I think we could probably do.
So I'm, on this, oh, I'm sorry. Uh huh. Yes.
No, I've always been a big proponent that I think that we need to look, look at the parking code. It's always been an item that's always been on my work-to-do list. I think, well, I just want to put that out there, would be my last opportunity to say that. It's always been one of my pet peeves. I think that it's been, the parking, parking requirements have been, I guess they precede Linda's tenure with the city, so I think that's due for some update.
So Ben, I'm, I'm hearing kind of the majority of people interested in revisiting this, really after the, the ad hoc temporary group meetings where some discussion around these issues can take place first and help to inform us. I think there is interest in, in relooking at this in general, but I'm not really hearing anything more than that. On the other recommendations that you have here, there's, there's really not questions for us. In other words, other parking, we've already answered that. Reorganization, I think, yes, we'd like to visit some reorganizational issues when, when we really come back on this item. And so if you're all comfortable, I think we should wrap up this item and I can try to summarize what I thought we said, and then if somebody wants to make a motion on that. What I'm hearing is that on the section of fire safety and emergency access and evacuation that we do recommend that Commissioner Swift, along with the arborist, the town arborist, attend with the planning director or staff, with the fire staff, to address a variety of issues related to ADUs, JADUs, and the Marin Wildland urban interface. Added to the topics that staff has listed here, we also wanted to address things like increasing setbacks, medical response, possible objective standards that might come out of all of these topics, including building materials, parking recommendations, the environmental issues that were talked about with trees, geology, flood, creek, heritage trees, landslides. We were wanting the street area expanded to one-way, more on maps, any, any of this that we can take to objective standards, mapping our priority, clarifying the wooie versus the other map that was in here, and really looking at the evac, adding more on the evacuation routes, like a, an evacuation study. That was recommendation number one, objective development standards. I heard us give you recommendations on the two that you recommended. One was the obscure glass or translucent glass. One was the building height going to 14 inches, 16 is too high.
14 feet.
14 feet, yeah, sorry. Thank you for that clarification. Front door not facing the street or the front property line, returning with the Native Plant Society list. We really are hoping for a map to help us to move us more towards a development standard on that. And maybe returning with the tree ordinance so we could better understand how we might integrate that in. And you were also gonna return on the short-term rental. Yes, we support you in returning on that, but more information on the transit occupancy tax. On the parking stuff, we, we want to visit that, but we really want you all to report back on it. We're gonna talk a little bit more. There wasn't really consensus one way or another, but we really want you to look at all of the options, including, you know, getting feedback from them on designated parking or recommendations for, for, for change and how that might relate to one-way streets and kind of all of that. But we're not willing to even start to address that until you return with more information. Is there a motion from anybody willing to close out this item?
Do we need a motion on this, or is this just a discussion item?
Motion item.
It's a, it's a motion to recommend. It's a recommendation to staff. I, I would move that we recommend staff proceed with, well, first of all, with installing Commissioner Swift as the commissioner's representative to the fire group. Secondly, proceed with the comments and suggestions made regarding objective development standards, including the recommended changes to window and sill height provisions, that we further recommend that staff continue amending the town's parking regulations as discussed by the planning commission, as summarized by Commissioner Rodriguez, and further that the commission directs affirming an investigation of designated parking and all the other items that were summarized by Commissioner Rodriguez, and to come back to us at the appropriate time. And in terms of reorganization, as well of the ADU, JADU chapters, that staff continue with that reorganization of the subsections. And once those questions are resolved, come back to the commission with substantive changes that should be made to the ordinance.
Any second on that motion?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing no one. Thank you very much for everybody's input on, on that. Does, do folks want to take? I'd love to take a break. Okay, so let's give ourselves five minutes. Thank you. Discussion item three, discussion of objective development and design standards. Commissioner, no, Commissioner. Planning Director Burdo?
Thank you, Chair. This is more of an informational item. It's, it represents the town, staff report, pardon me. The town responding once again to state mandates that, what it amounts to. And, and your commission is, is familiar with this. And indeed, it's, it's hard not to be exposed to the realities of where the state's focuses are legitimately prompted by a first-rate housing crisis in terms of units and affordability, and especially here in the Bay Area. As a result, the state continues to pass a blizzard of housing-related statutes, a number of which comprise the Housing Accountability Act, or HAA, and Senate Bill 35. And there's a laundry list, there's probably 30 of them that I can think of, that stipulate various programs and direct how housing projects shall and shall not be reviewed. The thrust of that is when it comes to local government review, in many instances, it is limited to whether or not the jurisdiction has locally adopted objective design and development standards. And previously, we were referring to those as objective development standards, but somebody decided that it'd be more helpful to add design in. And it's, you know, acronym is ODS. So that's the, the regulatory backdrop. And we've had these conversations. And of course, we're incorporating these objective standards into our regular zoning ordinance. We're incorporating them into our ADU regulations, as we've previously discussed earlier. The state has also recognized that local jurisdictions deserve some assistance in crafting these regulatory standards. It isn't just a one-way street, that if we're directed to facilitate housing, that it makes sense that we preserve some local control or input as to what housing, what types of housing, how it should occur in a community. And in the state, in passing Senate Bill 2, provided for grant funding to assist the local jurisdictions in responding to certain aspects of facilitating housing. So one of the things that's happened is, with this grant funding, the planning directors' group, of which I participate in meetings of, discussed this at length and agreed that it would, made more sense if we're going to look at objective development standards to try to pool some of our SB2 grant funds to get a really comprehensive look by a leading firm in assisting us in coming up with those standards. And so the county has, we, under the auspices of the County of Marin and their housing people, I think there's nine jurisdictions that are participating in this. And they've hired Opticos to, to help craft objective development and design standards for the participating communities, including the county. And what you see in the staff report under discussion is sort of the first type of informational piece that's going out. It's been modified to fix, to fit Fairfax in particular, but it talks about, you know, the need for odds. And I'm not gonna go into the, a lot of the detail about this. It's, it's pretty much listed in bullet points and anybody can go online or get a paper copy as, as they deem appropriate to read that. I would simply focus on some of the outcomes, where this is going. And one of the outcomes of this process, most prominently, is a toolkit of objective standards that will be developed by Opticos for the group involved in this process. And they will be based on place types that they've identified. And these could be generally looked at, well, the place type, there is a key phrase discussion about, about a place type. There we go. A place type describes fundamental characteristics of the kind of setting where development is anticipated and will correspond with the zoning districts that allow multifamily housing among Marin's participating jurisdictions. They will, they haven't defined those yet, they're looking at it. So, and what's nice is they're kind of doing this broad overarching look at all the jurisdictions and saying, okay, this looks like a medium-density, single-family zone. This looks like a downtown core that allows residential. And then they're coming up with, some people refer to them as form-based standards, but these will be objective standards. So any developer will be able to look at what the, the toolkit is and say, oh, okay, so it's a two-story building with a third-story setback. And I'm not saying we would have three-story buildings in Fairfax, that's just an example. But they would be providing this toolkit. A key component of Fairfax's participation in this was staff recognizes that we have our own unique community style and needs. One of our very strong needs is to have local participation and input. In other words, it's not a one-size-fits-all, even boiled down to the county and the various Marin communities. So when we put together our SB2 grant application, we included specific funding for, as it turns out, Opticos to do tailored work in the Fairfax community. And this includes, and your commission will be seeing this, a community engagement plan. And this includes, and your commission will be seeing this, a community engagement plan that will be presented to the Planning Commission this spring. And it will be, we will be scheduling a workshop. And this will be, again, to get residents' input. There will be a county-wide survey, and this will likely be released very shortly. And this is all designed to get people's input into this process. So I want to stress that, even though this is driven by state mandates, and it's kind of a, you know, do-it-or-lose-it proposition, it's an opportunity, a very important opportunity, for Fairfax to have real input and craft these standards in a way that meets our community goals and objectives. This is kind of a new topic, and, you know, as with many planning-related items, somewhat arcane to many people. There are a number of informational workshops scheduled. The first one is coming up on March 11th, and it's going to be in San Anselmo. It would have been lovely if they scheduled it in Fairfax, but it's next door. 105 Seminary Road, Montgomery Hall, so on the grounds, I believe, of the seminary. And it's simple enough to just Google the location, easy to find. And that will be from seven to nine PM. And so they, this begins the process of explaining what's going on and why, and, and get people's feedback. So I just want to emphasize that the town of Fairfax is allocating funds to get custom-crafted work done in Fairfax. Initially, this will be a listening exercise by both Fairfax staff and this consultant to hear what people's input is, their concerns, and basically begin this understanding of what we're, what we're aiming for and how it can work, best work for Fairfax. And the results that will come out of it. So, staff is cautiously optimistic or excited about this process. As I said, you know, when you, when you get a lemon, you make lemonade. And I'm not characterizing this necessarily as the same type of thing. But I think it, it is an opportunity for the town to take advantage, not only of the, the funding, but the fact that we have this, gosh, I think it's a million-dollar study total. It's, it's a really in-depth analysis for which the town can provide a very modest amount of money, which is being paid for by the state, to get input into this process and come up with a very comprehensive objective standard toolkit. And this will be taking place over many months. We don't anticipate that a draft product will be occurring until either very late in 2020 or the beginning of 2021. And as we know, when we get into these meaty topics in Fairfax, you know, whatever our anticipated schedule is, it will probably stretch out from there. But I'm interested in getting your commission's feedback. We, we really don't have, this is more of an informational item. If there were additional people here tonight, and perhaps the one audience member wishes to provide his input. But just get, we're here to get comments from your commission on this process. Thank you.
Thank you Ben. Is there any member of the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Hi there, Rick Hamer, Fairfax. My concern about objective standards is that they might lock down a certain architectural design, a certain architectural look, that might be great for 2020, but not so good for 2030, 2040, 2050. And what I'd like to see is for the commission to consider a periodic review with a public hearing, anytime they adopt something like this, so that they can be updated for the current fashion. Thank you.
So, so Ben, I'm wondering, you mentioned multifamily, and on the top of page two, it mentions single family. Is there any opportunity for any portion of this to address the ADU issue that we're talking about now?
Yes, but in only a related matter. Another SB Two grant fund that Fairfax has pooled with other jurisdictions on is, pertains to ADU and JADUs. And this is not being done by this firm, but they will be putting together a workbook on that process. We had a first discussion about that. So, it's being conducted in a parallel manner. And we'll come back to your commission with what certain, you know, that process and that work product might look like, but not as specifically as part of this.
And so maybe fold that into the next staff report when you come back on the other item. My other one is that it would be great if, first of all, Opticos is a great firm, so aren't we lucky? But here, these dates are around the corner, and I'm happy to carpool with anybody who wants to go or ride bikes there. But we need to get the, some information out. And so I would recommend that we get a one-sheeter, you know, that describes some of the key points that you're bringing up from Opticos, their PowerPoint for this meeting. Get it on our website. If we can get it out in our Parks and Recreation newsletter, a method for them, people to know about this, or the CCA Energy Bill, or whatever we can. We really need to get some information out there, because if, if information starts hitting and we have not communicated to people, they're going to feel like we're operating in the dark. And that's not what we're trying to do. So I recommend that. Anybody else? Andy?
So, I had a comment and then some questions. My comment was, along with the chairs, on the workshops, there's four workshops coming up. This whole process is going to be very important for this community. And they need to be as, ideally as knowledgeable as, as they choose to be before we start having Fairfax-related workshops. So as far as those four informational workshops that are in the staff report, I think the town needs to publicize that in all, and one of them's coming right up in all of their channels. So that means, you know, anybody that's on the Planning Commission email list, something should be developed that's just a one-topic about this that goes out to those folks, maybe the town council list, newsletter, a town blurb on next door, and get that out quickly so that people are aware of these. Because obviously, you know, the most convenient would be the one in San Anselmo. But putting out all the workshops, so people can avail themselves of that, and, and on the town website. And as the chair said, you know, if information gets out there before people hear about it from us, that's a concern. Well, there's already been an article in the IJ on this. So I would highly recommend that we put something out sooner rather than later on that. So that was my con, my comment. My questions are, are we aware of any other community that is already, has a product like this in place for their community?
There have been efforts to develop objective standards in certain areas. I'm not sure to what extent. It will be as broad scope as this.
Okay.
This is an opportunity with having this collaborative venture.
Okay. And then, can you recall what the nine jurisdictions are that are participating? Or can you provide that next time? And then when we talk about place types in each community, and I mentioned the IJ article. And one of the projects we had in town over the last several years that had a lot of community interest was Victory Village. So in that IJ article, we had our supervisor make a comment that if we had those standards, objective standards in the beginning, that project would have sailed through in a shorter period of time. Might not be the best way to have kind of broached that in this community. But when we develop standards, would it also include developments like a Victory Village? I guess that's a question that I would, I have about this process. I mean, place is, is kind of different, but when we look at structures, and I know it doesn't involve commercial, but would, unless it's mixed-use, right? But for things like a Victory Village, would it also include kind of objective standards for things like that? That's a, a question that...
Yes, and I could say yes, definitely, because in Fairfax, multifamily is unusual, and yet this is one of the thrusts of this, so, very much so.
Okay. And then, just my last question, and you may not know the answer. The county-wide survey, is that going out to, like, residents? Or do you know how that's going to be conducted?
I don't have the details. My understanding is they intend to roll that out fairly soon. I think there will be additional information regarding that at the workshops. So I will try to get that information in, if possible, incorporated into our web notice. And, and by the way, thank you for that reminder. I was planning to do that very quickly, and I will do so.
Thank you. That's all I had.
So the working group for this is at staff level, at the county or something? Or are you sitting on a working group?
Yes. Well, there's, it's, it's a preliminary working group, but the idea is that it's going to go out to the community to really start to refine what, what those standards would look like, and, you know, just backing up and just hearing people's comments and concerns.
So who's actively at the staff level managing the scope of work that Opticos is working on and the outcome that Fairfax will get? Is that you?
That was done at an administrative level. And there was a, a working group of planning directors, basically, working on that, led by the county. The county housing was the main driver of the process.
And so you have ongoing meetings with Opticos then, or how does, how are you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any input then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It indicates that the community-led survey of potential historic resources will run in tandem with the Opticos efforts. And I know we've talked for many years about doing the local historic inventory, and we've discussed getting help from Cassidy to Baker, and beginning that process. And nothing has happened that I can see. So, I have a recommendation, wanted to get some input from the rest of the commissioners, which would be, well, I have a couple of questions too, but let me ask this one first. Could we create a subcommittee or a community group to begin that inventory without waiting for experts? Like, I'd love to get together with my fellow commissioners and my little historic Fairfax book and start walking around town and, and, you know, without violating any, you know, Brown Act stuff. You know, maybe seeing how we could do that. If a subcommittee could do that, and we won't violate Brown Act with subcommittee meeting, you know, I don't know how we work that out, but I'd like to figure that out.
One of the things that staff could do, and thank you for reminding me, the historicity, because that is something we have heard in the past, in prior conversations with your Planning Commission. I mean, obviously, a lot of the iconic structures that we would want to pattern, future development after, have a lot of historic character and value. And, and that was one of the things to say, you know, look at these gorgeous buildings, and, and, you know, we need to incorporate that. So, those type of efforts, how that takes place, yes, we will work on that. I will come back with some recommendations to your commission in terms of options for how that could take place. In terms of Ms. DeBaker, my understanding is that she got real busy. And her efforts to secure volunteer assistance on that hadn't been super productive. But one of the things to do would be to take, what do they call that, a coalition of the willing volunteers? And there are those in this community, whether it's the Fairfax Historical Society or some other groups. But to involve those people with that effort. So, I will come back with more details on that for your commission.
Okay, and then similarly...
But before you get off that deep, but are you uncomfortable about us taking on the idea of an ad hoc group? Like if we said this evening that we want to initiate an ad hoc group, and that no more than a majority would do that, and if we did that action, would that make you uncomfortable? Or, like, can we say at the next meeting, we want to take that up? Because I think we've been talking about it for eight months or something. And I think there is some folks who are willing to meet a couple of times.
Well, obviously...
And I think with the study going on, this is a good time to put that feedback in there.
It's, it's too early to say what an optimal, or what the desired working group would consist of. I, I'm not opposed to the idea of commission participation. Obviously, if you have a majority of the commission, then it's a Brown Act meeting. But I don't know if we would be discussing that. I think the first thing to do would be to probably contact with a historic, sort of qualified historian, and talk about the type of, somebody who has experience doing these type of community outreaches, and see what they recommend. I do appreciate, though, that there is interest in this commu, in this commission on serving with whatever group occurs, and that will be definitely taken in factor.
Thank you.
Okay, and then similarly, I'm assuming if all of this showed up to one of these work groups, that would be problematic or not?
Brown Act is a very, it's like a ninety-page document.
Will you look into that before that? Because I would imagine you want the town council to let them know about it happening.
Right.
You want us to be participating, at least one of these probably. And, you know, if we have to notice it as a, as a meeting, we can do that just to cover our bases. So, think about that.
Well, and, and let me also say that, that the idea is to be very open. There's no intention to do anything in private. It's just a question, I, I think, of the logistics involved with it. So, typically with the historic stuff, there are people who kind of self-volunteer for those type of efforts.
No, I'm talking about the other workshops, the March 11th workshop in San Anselmo. If all of us show up to that, should we, that, that's okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're not conducting business. We're going to a different meeting to sit there and listen to a presentation.
And we're not saying that we're representing the Planning Commission in our attendance, and we won't be discussing Planning Commission business while we're there. We're just like a citizen.
That, that's correct. As long, what you can't do at those type of things is discuss it among yourselves. But as citizens, you are welcome to attend these type of things. In fact, I would hope that, as you alluded to, Mimi, that there would be representation on the Planning Commission and the town council. But it's just one of those, you can't talk about it. You can come back here and have, at a noticed meeting, do so.
I guess I don't understand what a workshop is if we're just sitting there quietly listening. That sounds more like a lecture. Oh.
Well, it's, it's conversation among yourselves. So, you're, you know, if you have comments, questions at the workshop, you're allowed to do so. It would be as a private citizen, you couldn't. It's just that if four of you showed up, you couldn't sit in a corner and start talking about that. That would be holding a, a meeting. So, and, and I can get more detail about that, but you can attend, you just can't converse among yourselves.
Does anyone have any other input into this great item? Not seeing...
Ah, yeah, oh, sorry. If we're looking at historical stuff along the road, I'm also interested in what the standards are to get on the historic building inventory. California State Historic Structure, you know, there's a reference in that. How do you do that? And what are the, what are the factors that go in? And what are the, what are the factors that go into that eligibility?
I can tell you what those factors are. First of all, there's a very definite process and a form, standardized form, that's produced by the State Office of Historic Preservation in California. And your review and assessment has to comport with particular requirements. They, like I say, there's a specific format. It isn't rocket science. You need a picture, you need to provide a brief summary of the history, the data construction, and discuss whether or not there's any, any fab, any historic fabric that has been destroyed. The trickiest part is that the owners of the property must sign off on the historic designation, which sometimes can be a problem. It does take time. But if you're doing, the, the nature of this work would require that it be done as a, a Fairfax-wide or a Fairfax project, and not so much on, on a case-by-case designating a historic property. And it does take some money, and it takes some staffing, but it, it's not, it's not the end of the world that we could, with a good survey and, and the appropriate documentation and, and bandwidth, put together a package of particularly historic properties, which, to begin with, must be 50 years old, and must be of a specific historic character. And, and then, you submit an application to the State Office of Historic Preservation.
And I would like to say that those are all options, that I, I would want to emphasize that, before we get too far into the weeds, that we'll come back with various options. I mean, there's historic districts, there's historicity. So there are many steps and options out there, and staff would certainly be not recommending that anybody jump into nominating properties or buildings at this time.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna come back with those, then you're gonna come back, and we've asked this before, when we were doing the Cassidy thing, is to identify, you know, state and federal options, and you mentioned historic districts.
Yeah.
What are the requirements, and what do they give you? And a definition of them, so...
Right. And restrictions and implications for property owners, et cetera. So, these would all be conversation items, and everybody would be aware of the, you know, the, the various options and what they imply.
And, okay, but it may be to wrap that item up, because, you know, you can call us, too, and we'll work with you on it, and be outside of this planning commission, and we don't have to wait for that. And so do that. Because this is the time with this. So, good. Thank you so much for that input. Really appreciate that. We look forward to that next thing. We're gonna go now to the minutes of January 16th. Did anybody have any changes, or was there any motion?
I have one comment on the minutes on page five. The last item, Commissioner Fragoso. My, my second comment that reads "Council should go to other entities that they have purview over." I believe my comment was that typically actions to contravene state regulations are most successful, not city by city, but when an entire county or a, a number of cities come together to develop, as we see tonight, objective standards and/or exemptions or requests of HCD. It's much more effective that way for maximum impact and effect in actually addressing California regulations.
Staff, do you really understand the distinction that she just brought up? Because I don't, so, but if you do, great.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any changes to the minutes? Cindy?
Bottom of the first page, where it says Commissioner Swift noted that the front page of the staff report should indicate an increase to 15 units. What I was doing there is just highlighting that it was, it needed to reflect the December application package. So what I was doing, if we could change that to Commissioner Swift noted the front page of the staff report needed to be corrected, from 14 units to reflect 15 units, as reflected on the December 2019 agenda item. And then on page three, third paragraph from the bottom, Commissioner Swift stated she listened to the tape of the last council meeting and noted there was some confusion about ADUs and short-term rentals. So what I was referring to there was that the town's prior ADU, JADU regulation update included a prohibition on ADU rentals of less than 30 days. And then Commissioner Newton had left for one of the items, but we didn't have in there, I don't think, when she returned. So if we could just note that in the minutes?
So that would be on page three, after item one, before item two.
Thank you. That's all I had.
So with those changes, I'm, will anyone entertain a motion in a second?
I'll move to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
So we have our first from Newton, and a second from Fragoso. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, not in favor, not hearing any. So, planning directors report, please.
Thank you. Okay. With the lamented pending departure of Commissioner Curling, it's noted that we are requesting applicants who are interested in serving on the planning commission, and that if commissioners have somebody that they feel would be a suitable candidate, you are encouraged to encourage them. I would love to hear about who those individuals are, try to get some background on them. But if you have people that are intelligent, work well in a group context, hopefully have some background. I mean, this is one of the challenges, is filling the shoes of, you know, professional architects and things like that, people who, you know, really bring something of high value to the discussions and reviews that, and, and type of work that the commission does. So, I would encourage your commission. That deadline for applying is on the March 22nd. So, please, you know, the, the, the time is drawing near for their first round of consideration. Of course, if they don't have candidates, they would continue it, but the idea is, you know, let's respect Commissioner Curling's need or desire to move on to other things and, and not keep her hanging on longer than necessary. I would also say that the town council is, has scheduled their goals retreat for March 20th, and that, in acknowledgement of their sort of predominant role in setting the, the course for staff and the commission, that we would be coming back after we get their direction with a work program discussion, probably at the April meeting, just to get that squared away. And finally, the League of California Cities Conference, that's coming up very shortly, March 4th through 6th. We currently have Commissioner Swift, who's volunteered to attend that conference, and if anybody else is interested, my understanding is that there's still openings, but those do tend to sell out. So, if you are interested, you know, it would be, it, it, they're fabulous. I think at least two commissioners have attended that. So, really good information, and up-to-date information, and, you know, these are, this, this is the entity that represents the local governing bodies in California. So, they know our interests, they represent them, and they provide information that is very pertinent to what we do. So, just putting out that plug. Thank you.
So Ben, on that March 20th City Council Goals Retreat, I had met with you and brought up the idea that at this meeting, we should be talking about what the planning commission would like to do. You didn't think that was such a good idea. Now, they're going to be saying, so on the 19th meeting, should we be providing any input on the same topic, so they could hear from us? There's some report from us about what we would like to do, so they can consider that? Or no, you don't think so?
Well, one thought would be, by the, by the meeting on the 19th, we should have a preliminary outline of topics. If we, if I can obtain that, perhaps, to bring that to the commission's meeting and, and get your input. If not, as I said, one of the things we discovered one year, was my first year here, where we came up with our program, and provided that to the council, and then the town, town council told us what our work program was. And there were certain intersections in certain areas that it did not intersect, and it, it was pretty clear that the most fruitful approach was to figure out what, what the town council or elected officials and policymakers want and need us to work on, and go from there. And an example is this short-term rental, which has come up very recently, but almost, you know, assuredly will be part of the commission's work program going forward this next year.
Okay. Any commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Were you gonna say something?
Well, yeah, I mean, otherwise, we're like the deep state of Fairfax, right?
So, commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments before we close, huh?
I have a question. The last town council meeting, there was a member of the open space committee that mentioned an application that had come before, is 200 Toyon, and the Napa Falls indigo issues there. So, I wanted to get a little bit, if you can, and maybe you can't, provide some, some background on that, and then my, on, on what's happening there. And then my question is gonna be related to permits, and the resolution and the permits that we issued. When do those, when, when do they die? And I know after we issued permits, the res, then we had the change in the ordinance where we sunsetted them. So if, so I just kind of want some background on what's happening there, and then get a sense of sunsetting permits.
We'll need to be very careful about individual in-depth comments.
That's, that's fine.
Because this is not an agenda item, so, just generally, Linda.
Or maybe just some information on what's going on, that was brought up in line with the council meeting.
The app, the owners' botanist did a survey and discovered a colony of Napa Falls indigo within the footprint of the house. Okay? 200 Toyon. Yeah. Subsequently, the owner removed it. And so we've been negotiating with the Department of Fish and Wildlife in Marin County Open Space to come up with a reparation, restoration program for that taking that occurred. We have reached a resolution that everyone's agreeable to. It's gonna cost, and it includes seed gathering from colonies that exist on Marin County open space land, right? Over a period of several years. It's also gonna include banking some of those seeds at the seed bank down south. It's gonna include trying to establish some new colonies on the site with propagated Napa Falls indigo. It's gonna cost about $13,000 to, to do this process.
And that's probably about as much information as we should provide.
Oh, but with regards to the sunsetting, his permits expire in March, but he has requested a year extension, which the planning director is now considering. Whether, you know, the code allows him to grant a year extension, then they will expire. Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe the only thing that I wanted to report was that the town sent me to the planning commissioners' conference at Sonoma, or, you know, it was offered to us all, and I wanted to go. And some, there was some really good information there. There were three topic areas. Was, one was wildfire, one was ADUs, and then the other one had to do with greenhouse gases. And on the wildfire front, they mentioned several technical advisories and other key documents that are about to come out. One was from the Office of Planning and Resources, which is the governing body for our general plan criteria, and somewhere in here is the other name. The first guy who spoke was from UC Santa Barbara, and he does these predictions and projections of wildfires. And it's this really heavy-duty model that he's built up that simply shows where is the next area that is likely to have a major problem? And he has all of these mitigations that he has available. And this model has, like, where are the major electronic transmission lines? He has density of population, building permits, roadway widths, insurance loss areas, all this great data. And it was like, whoa, somebody's actually done this. So it would be really cool to see if he's got anything available for Marin. He referenced a publication called Risk Reduction Measures, that they've built into this model that has all of these criteria for, for this areas that jurisdictions, I guess, are using. So that was really good information. And there, the new trend is something called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So that was, and he was talking about what jurisdictions had them, and how were they using them, and that kind of thing. So that was really good. What was the other thing I wanted to tell you about? The, oh, they had a speaker, Barbara Kautz, who is an attorney who lives here in Marin, and she's really fantastic. And she also works at Marin County advising them, and she's working on this DOD thing that, that you guys are gonna start. And what she was talking about is a lot of the things that really Ben's already been bringing to us. I felt like we were very knowledgeable attending, you know, the no net loss policy that's coming, the objective design criteria that jurisdictions need to do. But also, the trends that she was talking about that I thought were really interesting is that now jurisdictions are doing citywide SEQA. And so, at the general plan level, what has been historically done is, is policy-level SEQA. Now they're talking about going a little bit deeper, and it's because of some of the things that we're talking about right now, that we don't have some of the wetland, you know, designations, or we don't have where are the speedy species. So they're gonna start asking for money at the general plan level, and doing deeper stuff at wider levels, so that you can say, over this area, you can't do this. And so, we're, we're starting to talk about that, and that's what she says is the trend. Also, the other issue was just this issue of a lot of cities losing impact fee funding, and having to try to figure out, I mean, the cities have been hit so bad with the redevelopment money loss, and then property value lost, so, lot less property funds, and now it's gonna be impact fee, fees that we're not able to draw. So that was really interesting. And then the greenhouse gas speaker, the one thing that I was interested in is that the state is now looking at 40% reduction from 1990 levels by 2040, and kind of changes at the renewable portfolio level going to 50% now, which is going to start ratcheting down a whole guns, bunch of things, and they're looking at, well, how are they gonna do that? Now that they've had all of these new building codes that have just come online for energy and building materials, they're looking at water and, and manufacturers and some other, other ways. So I thought that was really interesting. Cindy went with me. What did you think?
So if I can add on to that, I had Linda send everybody the agenda, and the, which also included the bios of the presenters, and then a link. also included the bios of the presenters and then a link. It went out this afternoon, so you probably haven't, it's hot off the press.
I thought maybe I'd lost it.
No, no.
That's what I was gonna ask for.
And it also, and then a link to Sonoma State's site where you can pull all the presentations. And it's also where they've kept all the previous years, so you can look at the previous ones. So, the wildfire one was, you know, was a whole section on that. We do have a Community Wildfire Protection Plan in Marin, but their law seminar, their Dan, right, law lecture was on, in essence, property rights in natural disasters.
And Kurt's dead.
And, right, but it's, they, right, but that, they call that legal section of those planning, meaning, as, as his, right, right. So, that was pretty interesting. You know, they went into takings and things like sea level rise and, like, on the East Coast. So, that was pretty good, too. So, I mean, you know, this is the second time I've gone. It's always very informative. It brings in planning commissioners from across the state. So, it's worth looking at the PowerPoint.
Anyone else? Then we'll go ahead and, it doesn't say we need to do a motion for closure. Shall we, though?
I have a question.
Yes.
But I have another questioner, I guess, comment. Do we have an update on the, the striping project?
The what?
The striping, the road striping project, the controversial road striping.
That's being discussed at the next town council meeting. It's on the agenda. So, I would say stay tuned for that. I don't have information in particular, but I know that there's a working group on that, and there will be a presentation.
I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I will second it.
I'll make the motion and you can second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Aye.